I'm giving them one. Hi, Dan, what's my one? Then, and four.
Body appears to be a little bit louder.
Body two. Body one.
We're going to call this meeting for. We are listening. Commission meeting on March nine, twenty twenty three. It's Pastor Melbury. Pastor Melbury, could you please give us the invitation?
Sure. Father, we thank you once again for your loving kindness and for the multitude of your tender mercy. God, here we are again, standing in your presence as an open people. We pray, God, that you will crown our head with wisdom and give us understanding, God, in those things that are needful to move the city forward. We pray, God, that your hand would be upon our commissioners, our mayor, and to all that are involved in this process. We ask, God, for divine guidance and for wisdom and for the courtesy of respect for each other. We pray, God, that you will bless even now, lift even now, and give strength and courage. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen and amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the states of America
and to the people of this country. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McHastle. Commissioner Justin Campbell. Commissioner Will Holmes. Commissioner Rufus Buller. Mayor Robbie Correa. All members present in accounted for, we have a forum.
Approval admitted. Motion to approve on all three minutes, February sixteenth, twenty thirty twenty one.
Motion to approve all baby change in minutes.
Motion, Commissioner Campbell, second. Standing by, Commissioner Vaughn, all in favor? Any opposition? We can. Public recognition, presentations. We had a request for proclamation for National Safe Place Week, rather, excuse me. We're starting like a motion to approve. We're going to read an abbreviated version in there. Do you want to read the abbreviated version, Ms. Collins?
Once past I, Roberta McCrea, Mayor of the City of Placa, together with the members of the Placa City Commission to hear about her claim, March twenty second through twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, as National Safe Place Week in the City of Placa. And we call upon our citizens to promote the program, and we encourage neighboring communities to establish safe place locations.
So.
Second, all in favor? Any opposition? Ms. Carr?
So, would you like to tell us a little more about? Sure, I'd love to. We have, actually, we have about thirty four state places in Plac- Placenta County. Now, what safe place is, is a place that if a child feels unsafe for any reason whatsoever, they're out on the street, if they're, they just, there's something at home, or maybe they're even just getting bullied and they are afraid to go home. They can go into one of these places with a sign and say, I need some help. And that person just really has to be kind and say, and call me, and I will come and take care of it if I can do whatever I can for the child. It's just a great way to help try to keep kids safe in the area. I do go to schools and talk to kids about it so they all know about safe place. And I really appreciate all of you supporting us and supporting Safe Place and supporting our kids being safe in Placenta.
Thank you all. Next, President, 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 excuse me, accreditation of the Placa Police Department Law Enforcement Chief. Sure.
We need a minute. On February twenty third, I had the privilege of attending the accreditation conference. And during that time, the Placa Police Department of the City of Placa was awarded a Premier Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation the the certificate for reaccreditation. And I wanted to take this opportunity to share with the commission in the city and just so they know that we were reaccredited and we are being considered a force of substance for the Placa Police Department, for our department. And I want to be able to share in recognition of that accomplishment. Begin possible. I forget, commissioners, can you take a picture?
Absolutely.
We know where to take.
I will be sending everybody a detail or what we're trying to do, but it's just to give you an idea of what we want to do.
It's only tier one structures that we intend to address in the fashion that I outlined, putting the aggressive abatement at our cap purpose.
So from the the tier ones, when we get into the end of getting to the bigger problem, what's the cost? Average cost per unit when we do it. So see.
Believe that in the past, and Mr. Griffith can speak to this, but I believe in the past that we averaged, including tipping fees and depending upon how much any break we get, about ten thousand dollars.
That's correct. And I'll add to that, you currently have two hundred twenty five thousand dollars in ARCA funding allocated for this effort. And you have remaining forty seven thousand dollars from last year's sale of surplus properties. And later on in this agenda, we're presenting some additional surplus property. So the proceeds of that potential sale that we operate and even from Hall could potentially go towards this program.
That one structure was that. That. Is that the one that's on the thirteen street?
Right. Don't put one address right up top of your head, but yeah, we have one on thirteen street and I think another one on Washington Street.
Thirteen and Washington.
That's that's okay.
Cause you're able to scan to depict your son.
It actually look worse than the picture shown here.
We have detailed pictures of all of them and we'll send y'all next week with giving breakdowns or everything.
That's awesome. I'll go back up.
And again, those are just the first ten that we brought out for chill one. We actually have one there for weekend over. I have a little bit of that.
Our aim was to get properties that were basically undeniably blighted, dilapidated, safety risks, et cetera, for the first time.
That's level two, two real speed.
Nobody own it?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, yes, I I have the property.
They're not, I thought it was all my thing, but um, I mean, that what we're fortunate is, but it looks like.
So if the commission, we can ask, answer questions, if the commission has any. We didn't want to start this program without the commission being aware of it in advance and if you have concerns, qualms or.
I think it's time.
I don't know.
I think it's time.
So I think we initiated trying to do the light, get rid of light and slow and this is major step. And I support.
Sorry, you got mine.
Yep.
Shine the gym, keep shining the gym.
You have my support. Um, I would almost do this as a campaign. So that the citizens of the city is aware on the efforts that we are trying to make and hopes of saying that possibly we doing them now, but she could be next, some type of deal.
And I apologize, I failed to mention that commission. It's very good point and one that we intend to address both through information on our website.
Yeah, sorry, Commissioner. Uh, that's a great idea. Uh, we actually looked into the cost to send the mailer out to everybody in the city that owned property. And it was estimated at thirty five hundred dollars. So in addition to some of the other things that Mr. Paul started to mention, we were planning on doing that.
It is our hope, as you were implying, that if we sent the mailer out, action was seen, it might encourage some to take the block, the blocks measured on their own. So we agree that's a good step.
And I also add to that, the coordination force and Simon is going to do more with me to really educate them on what light is, what issues, what concern they could be looking for to have it fix over the.
And my last request is with some of these meetings, um, I don't know if they can be recorded, but I think it'll be very informative if we can point some people back who are not able to attend those meetings to some kind of resources like recordings that we can send them to say, hey, these are some of the questions that you may have and these are, um, some of the answers from board or Q and A on the website or just so that we can refer people back to.
And what I would, what I could do is put the top ten questions, and I'll still go on my Facebook page and also Instagram, so we have somebody to reach out to and see. And I'm willing and my staff is willing to go into neighborhoods and build it for company.
Would you also do this well in terms of, um, the the website that you can normally register in, um, light?
Yes.
Community as well as if you want to just do a database search on your form.
And I, I wrote the setup for that way, so they can kind of get that counterized.
To add, this is a question, and I don't know if the commission considered or is this also maybe getting some of our funds or utilizing? If we have a level three, normally, well, I'm sorry, yeah, normal structure that could possibly have, um, minute or minor repair, but the homeowner is not have capacity to do so. Is there any way we can utilize some of those funds to assist those individuals? Now, when I say that, I'm not talking about this. I'm saying an individual that um, maybe, uh, physical challenge, can't get out and do the repairs and they may need to get a contractor out. And I thought, I thought we were talking about something like helping them as well, not so that we won't get the perception that we've taken a new product. That's what I'm saying. Some of these are no one living in them, but some of them are going to be tagged by your department or codes. And maybe we can just help them. I don't know if it's possible now, I'm just going to, is there an option available for that, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Holm?
I would believe that if we establish criteria in advance as to would qualify, i.e. someone on an income below X, someone with, um, physical disabilities. That that type of criteria, which was established as part of the program that the commission approved. Um, then the only other thing we'd have to establish is a method of allocating the money, uh.
Just a suggestion, uh, Mr. Holmson and Commissioners, um, we could go back and we could maybe look at some community partners because the administration of the program is probably something that we're not equipped to do, but I'm sure there may be somebody in the that we could partner with, wouldn't you say, Mr. Holmes?
Certainly, then we could.
We use the apartment, we have Home Depot and Lowe's for community projects that they had different points with people throughout the community. They went in and did a number of things. I remember working with um, down on number project, even they even have the school district with each. Um, and Palacahai, Palacahai, different things, so we need to work with.
I think as important as, uh, and to Mr. Griffith's point is a group that we could partner with to help us with administering that program. Um, that would be, and there are groups that we could certainly reach out to and and, uh, look at the possibility of them helping.
And maybe also helps in the, in the.
We could probably develop a master list of those and talk about it and seek out.
And and maybe some of the funds that we recover or recuperate, we could, yes, that's what I'm talking about. Not, not nothing major that we have to take on as.
So I have a question. We talked about the administration of within that, uh, two hundred and twenty five thousand. Can it go towards paying administration costs?
Tom, then you have an opinion on that?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna have a hard time for showing up. I didn't catch that.
The question was, can we use any of the two twenty five in our money that has been generically allocated toward this sort of project or administration, i.e. to pay a community partner to help or.
It would most likely need to be a contracted service, though. Yes, sir.
Did a little bit of that. So.
Entertaining motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, I think we already had, I think we had something in play for Commissioner a while back when we, you want to offer thing in terms of helping some of the community with some of the projects.
Don't talk about this.
You're talking about the.
Okay, oh, yeah, we want to do that.
So let's tell you that in motion.
One approved.
We're approved.
Before this project.
Then motion.
My second.
Thank you, all in favor? Hi, any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward. Um, then a couple of brief uh, comments by me and then Mr. Know, do you want to report on the boat or you want to make it?
I'm delighted to report on the boat. Uh, March of the project managers, we have Pride of, Pride of Palacahai, um, one, it is dry docked, gifted dry dock. We had the, um, Prideant had been on board completing the repairs. Better than whatever accumulated in the, in the foredeck, they gone through that. We had a Coast Guard there on Wednesday. They went through, they were very positive about all the repairs that they had seen. There was another one, people member that we agreed on the, um, uh, on the fix for that. Very, very reasonable, very, very doable. Try to do the process of finishing those. So we are really, um, we're going to take care of a couple of other things while it's dry docked. And then, um, so I think next week, then we'll be back in the water and we'll be doing the final list of lighted exit signs, please come on the doors, um.
Fire extinguisher brackets.
Fire extinguisher bracket, historic hundred minutes of items that have to be explained in the body will be ready for the Coast Guard final C O R inspection.
You got, you got where it was dry docked?
Uh, but whatever the commission ultimately decides to do with these boats, we had to get it extended. And so that was a result of prodding the bond company again, you know, I guess product, Mr. the contractor again, and so it looks like we will get a seal of approval from the Coast Guard in very short. That is, that was the opinion that the, unless you misunderstood or less I understood something different from you, that seemed to be the opinion of the Coast Guard inspector.
I think absolutely. And then followed up with a report from the Green Architect.
We also have reconnected with Mr. Legasi and, uh, or Legasay in the event. Um, regarding the contract and hopefully we'll, you know, be at a make or break point here very soon. Um, so next, I wanted to mention to you, uh, Mr. Jones is on a Zoom, we interviewed a potential finance director candidate today. I do not want to presume anything right now, but if background check seems to work out, uh, I think staff that was, that was present, uh, all agreed that she seems very qualified and, uh, a good fit. So if the background check, which is, and I, and in this case, I believe the background check will in fact, uh, probably yield no surprises. Uh, we would be looking at trying to make an offer. He's currently the finance director in Quincy, Florida, where he's been for four years. Uses the same system we use with Black A D G. Basically, uh, engineered and, uh, staff had designed their own department there. Uh, does the budget, the, uh, basically everything that would, very similar to us, very similar in terms of number of employees, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, have high hopes at this time right now. Um, and let's miss Jones jeans as I see. Um, and then finally, just, I did send an email out to you today, uh, and this is preliminary, but I wanted to keep the commission informed. Uh, and you know, uh, the mayor, Mr. Griffith and I went to Tallahassee a few weeks ago. And with our lobbyists presented our, the appropriation priority that you approved to, uh, a number of different senators and representatives. Um, as I said, it's very early and I don't want to anyway create a misimpression, but, uh, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne have filed, uh, appropriation bills that would fund all of our, your priorities. That we all know that this is early and there will be a process and things will get cut down, but as of right now, I believe the total was about twenty four million dollars that was in on the, in the paper, on the paper, uh, and I said, uh, again, again, and again, we all know that as this process goes forward, you know, there'll be budget tightening, et cetera, et cetera, but it's just awful nice to see, uh, our local representative and senator put forth our priority in full, in paper, in the House and the Senate and you know, even if we get it pared down, uh, it's, uh, it's a good start. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have a little thing. I apologize.
I believe John McMillan had the presentation.
Oh, I apologize, Bill. I thought you did yours.
Evening again. Um, I've compiled an update for a few projects, including the St. John's Avenue street skate project and lower mediation along with some of the other smaller projects we have on our city. Um, we could go through some of the pictures. I think you might have noticed recently within town, uh, we intersected now open the traffic. Um, we've entered into the punchless phase before the St. John's intersection pre- pre- paid phase. Um, so right now, and they're leaving minor items that just repaired or installing and making a warning. Basically wrapping up to get out of our way. So hopefully we let traffic comes in the area. Uh, just something of a note that I found, did you know, they installed over one thousand two hundred tons of fifty seven stone underneath all of our intersections to maintain the permeable surface. So it should aid in some drainage issues that are present downtown. Uh, we go forward, you can see Fifth Street, uh, you know. This was prior to them being cleaned up. We had gone through and swept in conjunction with T D landmark, um, to remove a lot of the, the, the settlement that settled over the long construction process we've had. Uh, if you want to continue this long. Again, these are just Sixth Street going down. I, I think that they do represent a vision that was put forward by staff um, for these intersections and hopefully what we should expect out of the rest of the St. John's project. Eighth Street, you can probably find slides or find pictures. So the mold remediation is at this point in the final stages, uh, basically just waiting on a walk through myself tomorrow. Um, for these identification, uh, expert we've, we've passed, though there is no more mold present in the building, so we should be entering able to enter the building now and do the reconstruction phase. Uh, that'll involve some significant drywall work, uh, reconstruction of one of the displays, uh, reconstruction of the back room, reconstruction of the utility rooms, there was a significant amount that was removed. Might continue through, but we kind of see some of the water damage from the roof leaks. No present that are now repaired, some of the mold that was present inside of all of the restrooms. Um, some of remediation, uh, so they sealed off certain areas of the building in order to sanitize it, uh, and, you know, maintain it a protective barrier while it's working the rest of the structure. Uh, again, that's a significant amount of drywall that was removed. It needs to be replaced, but we're, we're beginning to get it done. Uh, previously on Madison Street, we had conducted some repairs with staff and contractors. Um, re-moving and relaying a lot of the pavers uh, to have a more serviceable service, uh, surface. Uh, this is a skill that I think that is a benefit to us to build internally. We have a lot of rich streets that we can affect internally very quickly. Um, to give us a better surface until we have total reconstruction processes, uh, later on down the road. Want to continue, kind of see, you know, the after effects, it's a uniform surface, no more speed bumps. Um, at least not too bad, really. Want to continue. Again, this, this area was particularly bad. On the go on. This is a, uh, a fairly large leak in one of our, uh, Surrah Man Southwest, Larson Boulevard, uh, because someone had played in it. Um, but repairs should be happening. Well, they started today. They should have more evidence this issue tomorrow. Uh, there's a party interest to face this. Uh, this is, uh, some of the repair workers, corporate needed for the, uh, North Side Hot Mix Asta Ball Resurfacing Program. Uh, raising one of the grain inlets that sunk significantly. That's our staff. They can pull it up, raise it up, I believe, six inches, uh, to the appropriate elevation and that area has been filled in with lime bays and preparation for paving in the middle of this month. Uh, we had to make some repairs to the city water tower to support Palacahai's filling efforts. Um, what a significant process. I didn't realize how involved it would be to, uh, replace some cable and all, but that has been, uh, the cable itself has been fixed. Uh, there's some other, I guess, equipment issues that they'll be working through.
So that's the water tower?
Correct. So that was the inside jase going up to the top and then the view, I guess, from the top of, uh, the antenna and, uh, safety light.
Someone go to them down there?
No, we did not. And Fred, I'm gonna tell you, we don't have any insurance.
I wouldn't like to do it, but I don't.
We continue. Uh, the, the two vehicles, the two F one fifty fifty, we were at the center channel last week, were delivered. Uh, they're in our possession. We're in the process. Correct. Uh, we're in the process of putting the decals on them and getting some toolboxes for our utility staff and moving them as the word go. We're replacing a Ford Ranger and a Dakota, both of which are nearing two hundred thousand miles in city traffic. The two hundred thousand miles on a truck running two miles one way is pretty significant. We continue. Uh, at the end of Fifth Street, it done, we've placed a structure. Uh, basically it's an outfall to address the complaint for buildup of water and road washouts at the end of that street. Uh, we'll wrap that into a spillway, uh, that is, that's still reinforced concrete for the spillway on the backside. The bricks that we pulled out from Fifth Street will be used to armor the spillway so that we don't have any erosion and really it just it's cost effective rip rack for us. Uh, this is the locating of a water line on St. John's Avenue North Side Project with the county, uh, for relocation, that is a funny, they had to conduct a, a relocation of that water line to support placement of that box cover adjacent to it. That happened at night with city staff support. Um, it started about ten P M and then until almost six A M. It was quite a significant effort to get that accomplished. You can see the finished product in the next slide. Again, all of that, just to put that pipe on top of, um, that concrete box, uh, sixteen people there. Uh, contractor, D B Civil, we're working with the county and then our ourselves supporting already and it tells them shutting off the water. Eleventh Street, we've got some sidewalk reconstruction that happened at, uh, Main Street. This is in progress. Unfortunately, I did not get a chance to take the final picture. It, it looks nice today. I think that, that particular site needed some addressing and, uh, we're glad to be able to support that. Thank you. That's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I have a question going back to St. John's, uh, and papers. I think it's a wonderful touch, but, um, what are some of the updates about fix the actual road? I think, I think it's wonderful. We have the neighbors, but it's, the road is horrible. It's horrible downtown, it's horrible through the city. Um, I know I've received several calls. Um, I myself try to avoid it, but I would like the citizens, because just as you reported to the meeting, I saw a Facebook status. And we know things can blow deep on our portion, um, but I would love to hear what's the plans of, uh, well, what's the plan slash update of the entire St. John's corridor? Yeah, I'd be to report on that in this year. So we can bring back a more detailed report at the next meeting, but I don't mind telling you some of the things that have transpired, um, over the past couple of months. Uh, the first is, we did an exercise where we looked at the bid quantities with the contractor that you currently have and reached out to some contractors in the area to see what a comparison of putting it back up the bid for resurfacing versus their contract cost. It does look like there are some cost savings that we could realize, um, if we did put it back up the bid specifically for resurfacing of the road. Um, the one hesitation is that we do not want to resurface until we're done with the sidewalk and the landscaping work. Uh, because that can be somewhat messy and destructive to the pavement surface. So where we stand right now is reaching out, uh, to an engineer, to value engineer. Uh, we have to resubmit the D O T, the new set of plans and specs, because what we previously had, we don't have the budget for unfortunately, so we have to scale back a little bit. We're hoping to schedule that in the next couple of weeks. We believe it's going to be the same vendor that's doing your way finding permitting downtown, so they're already going to be working in the area. Uh, so in short, we're working on something, hope to have a more detailed report to you in about a month.
And John, just for clarification, you're talking about the, the design that you're talking about, is that going to be for the streetscape and sidewalk or you're talking about the roadway itself?
Both.
Okay, so you indicated that we could not, it would not be appropriate to move forward with the street repaving until the sidewalk and street scape was done.
Correct.
So can you give the commission any estimate of timeframe on getting at a point so that we could start the actual road reconstruction?
We'll find, be doing some math in front of you. It's going to take about two to three months to get the vendor lined up and a contract in front of you and approved and to get the design going. Probably another one to two months to get the design finalized and then probably another two months for procurement. So you're well up to six months before we can go back out and do all the sidewalks and streetscape.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way that we will be able to formulate some kind of information flyer? Uh, just to kind of put out there as far as just saying, this is an estimate. Um, again, I'm all about making sure that we have, what we can point the citizens, um, to some kind of
Time line.
Timeline, just so that they have an expectation. Um, and I think that if we kind of do a better job in that area, I know we have public information officer that really for her and that may assist with some of that stuff, but if we can kind of get some of those updates, um, on the website, if we can do some kind of bolster downtown that's just, and I randomly find just something to say, excuse the mess, this is our progress. Um, yes, and I failed to mention, and it would be, uh, excellent opportunity to do it at the same time. We're still going to need to reach back out to the downtown vendors and property owners, uh, to get their feedback on that redesign and the scheduling. So we can do that in coordination with that effort and thank you for the plug on the P I O. Um, it's nice to get that word out.
Well, I have a question. You mentioned that this, this would be a way to get some compensation if we put it back on the street. But we already have a pool and we have a plan now that we scaled back on. That.
What for it?
Am I quoting you first?
Yeah, you're about one point four million dollars short.
Okay, so, um, and what that until us taking out or taking out of the original plan?
It may be a better conversation to actually show you the full set of plans so I can point at specific things, uh, members, but we're going to have to scale back on the degree of landscaping. The degree of sedimented bees, which are benches, trash receptacles. Uh, luckily you won't have to scale back on the new lighting that's contracted with Ford Power Light that's still progressing. We will not be able to replace as much curb and gutter as we originally hoped to. So we limited to just removing a section of drop curve where you have old driveways or you don't need driveway anymore, putting curb and gutter in there. Uh, we will have to achieve A D A, uh, compliance as we move through St. John's Avenue. That'll probably be the most costly element of what we're looking to do. Resurfacing, that's made it somewhere between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars. We have the budget for that. It's just getting the remaining components, which are the sidewalk, the landscaping and the electrical infrastructure that's possible to fit within the remainder of your budget.
So if we were to go ahead and plan right now, current, um, schedule that we're on, not, not putting it back on the street. What would be the timeline would be one, quicker than six months?
I think, uh, the contractor probably would come back with six to eight month timeframe. Um, it is very involved work, sir. It's not easy, especially working in and around businesses that you're trying to maintain access as much as you can. Uh, and the only way to fund that, uh, right now, because you do not have that in revenue that is currently core with what you would potentially be bringing in next, next fiscal year would be debt service. That's the only way that we can do this.
Any further questions?
But, but you're talking about the St. John's, um, gives repaving or whatever. But would that be, we also, you know, with the water lines down in St. John's, do we have, we have water line on that St. John's? And in the section, right?
That project is done.
Well, the, um, in the end now?
From Fourth Street back to the road tracks, all the water lines have been replaced and the old lines have been made.
Right, so I was about home from there, like we, we coined the section from Palm all the way out to nineteen in that section and then double section.
So Palm Namously is done and complete. I believe you guys actually signed off on it.
Correct.
I think we signed off on and verified. Yeah. And that section of resurfacing, we were speaking to Olivia Rodriguez at the county just this week. And he said that he was looking to get that out to bid in the next week or so. So the county is looking at resurfacing that in the coming months. That's Palm to Mosley.
And then where we knew that cooperation and coordination with the county to, now, let me just see, so we can kind of paint that a little bit, force a little bit to see, you know, the timeframe with each section.
If you'd like, maybe not at the next meeting, but the meeting after, we don't have student month, we can do a specific presentation on the multiple phases of St. John's Avenue.
Thank you.
So one brief and then one lots of brief, the belt and pound at three hundred thing and the I mean, three hundred north, three hundred northern. Yeah, I have, we have a title work completed, and it appears as though the path towards marketable title is not as maybe difficult as we, as might have, as my head, as it might have been. It looks like two summary of state proceedings would accomplish delegation of authority to convey title in, in three surviving individuals. So I'm going to go ahead and initiate those two state proceedings and and I've met with Ms. Snyder a couple of times. She's agreed to a contract which says that we will pay her the agreed upon price less our actual cost incurred in securing a marketable title. And when, and we will convey the money to her and the deed from her to us once we have secured marketable title. And so she's agreed to sign that, that deed or that, I'm sorry, that contract that we will be doing next week. So, and they, some of the two state proceedings are pretty, they're summary proceedings, they shouldn't take a lot of time. So we should be able to, because of the circumstances, so we should be able to move that along pretty quickly. And then we can end up owning that property and moving forward to eliminate that particular building as well of our level. And the next item is not as, may not be as quick. Pursuant to your direction, we went ahead and listed the properties, the hemicall properties. We actually, with the input of the realtor, looked at a proposed lot split of the properties. We make basically the properties a little bit more we thought marketable. I passed that around, it's taken in off from contract, but I've got to have that back. That shows in red how a lot split would work. So the one lot, the vacant lot was valued at about nineteen thousand dollars. We received three offers. And the, basically, they were all about the same. And so the realtor told the three people that made offer, look, without telling anybody what anybody else's offer is, you have until five today to give us your best offer. Because they all offered contract price, nineteen thousand. So the three, the three all then did submit new offers, one at twenty-two and two at twenty-five thousand dollars. That's for the vacant property. Two of those three indicated they had an interest in buying the hemicall, but they haven't had a chance to look at hemicall and decide for certain whether they whether, you know, what they're willing to pay, et cetera. So what I have tonight are a couple of different issues. I have the three contracts, two at twenty-five and one at twenty-two. And I supported to you by email earlier this week, last week. Proposal that we received from Mr. Chetfield whereby the, he indicates the South Historic Neighborhood Association wishes to buy the properties for a total price of one hundred thousand dollars, basically financed with tip money on a deferred payment plan where they pay a certain amount down a certain amount for years. And then today, I was advised, in full disclosure by Mr. Spalding, that the neighbor adjoining the, our properties to the east was basically had questions about the sale purpose process. And I think he is your client. So I guess what I would like to do, if you are willing, is put on an emergency item or as an emergency item, an item which would be authorization for me to sign a contract for sale, agree to the sale of the vacant lot that is configured in the diagram that I showed you for the twenty-five thousand dollar. And I would assume that we would have to perhaps decide among the, the two offer twenty-five, as to which one it goes to. And I have not really spoken to Mr. Spalding about that process. And then during that discussion, we can talk about everything else that I've just raised. So if, if there is a desire for us to move forward about putting that on the, on as an emergency item, then we can try to address these items right now.
Except for the hemicall.
Structure.
Right. The hemicall, I think, I think hemicall also wanted the lots as well.
Do you, Mr. Edgewood?
No, 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 that's, that's what, they don't want the building without the property. And that's, that's what you're requesting.
That's what they're requesting. We have those three houses for the lots.
And it's kind of left to you, I kind of left it to the commission. We didn't agree to split the lots before.
No, we, we haven't agreed to do that. I don't, I don't know about splitting, selling separate lots and.
Well, we advise you, in the broker's opinion, that you would be your, your best option for maximizing your profit, would be to sell the vacant lot as a lot and then hemicall and the property itself as a separate parcel. The only thing that's changed is, in order to make that one vacant lot a point two six acre lot, we had contemplated a lot split so that you would have that one lot at the twenty-five thousand, whatever you get for that lot, which is above the market appraisal that you were provided, you remember you were providing an appraisal, I think that you had a high and low on the lot. But I think the low was, I mean, the high was nineteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken, on that vacant lot. And then you had the separate structure with a number of like one seventy-five or so, I believe, if I'm doing off the top of my head of the, of the hemicall structure. So, I mean, it was contemplated in the broker's opinion that you would have two parcels, but again, it's entirely you as what to do.
Oh, yeah, I think, you know, that's good, I'm trying to get the maximum amount, but at the same time, getting the maximum amount and what it could potentially do to the community, you have to take all that into consideration, at least I would think. So we sold a lot and one person got a lot, another person got a lot, and somebody else got the building, you guys piece up the mess.
No, 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 the building and what, it wouldn't be three different lots there. One lot with the building and then one lot in that split that you see there, there's two lots. One lot's got hemicall on it and the surrounding property, which will actually increase the parking, if I'm not mistaken. And then one lot is the adjacent lot, so there would only be two parcels.
Okay. Uh, okay, appreciate that, but I think with what hemicall and the South Historic Representatives quickly, yeah, I would like to give them first dibs. And that's just one thing, we just have to talk with the commission and see what their opposition is. But I would like to at least let them have first dibs at, at that price that they recommend.
It was marketed already on the, my, my concern, and I can say this as somebody living in the neighborhood, who is the South Historic Neighborhood Association right now? Who, who comprises that membership? I'm, you know, the neighborhood has not been called many. It was underutilized. I, I just have concerns about this proposal and the financial wherewithal that organization to maintain that property, but that's just me because I don't have those facts.
And I would second, I don't live in the neighborhood, but I've stated it multiple times. When we've had certain individuals coming for us questioning, who exactly is the South Side Stories? Some sort of neighborhood association, as you had in meetings where it says we are speaking on behalf of the South Side Neighborhood Association, then you have people that live in the South Side, just like Madam Mayor, who said, no, we didn't vote about that. So I have a concern. I would love to see it stay local, but again, if it's not encompass of the entire neighborhood association, the people that actually live there, I think this really weighs something.
Yes, go ahead, Christian.
Standing correct myself in speaking, we did talk about lot split. And I think what makes me concerned was that neighbor who's adjacent to the hemicall, give him the consideration, I think. Because I think the entire issue came up with them parking when they had, they were parking and then the neighbors couldn't get out of their property, off of their off their lots because people's blocking the man. Hopefully they're one of the ones that want to buy the lot. They don't want to buy the lot, it's going to be, like, Commissioner Born said, it'll be kind of difficult for them, the new owners of the old lot.
So I, I, I won't try to speak to details, the property was listed, and I don't think that the neighbor submitted an offer, but I don't know why. I think that the neighbors are here tonight. So, and I don't know details about why. They weren't here, deckers were here.
No, they're not here, they're not here. That's somebody else.
Well, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. But the deckers are not here, that P J and Maureen.
Okay, I apologize.
And I guess when we said seven, we came in control of that. I think the, the issue we got is the two twenty-five thousand dollars bids or whatever, how are we going to determine?
I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm going to have to talk to Mr. Spalding about what we do with that, because there, I was looking at the contracts and they're both bottom lot twenty-five thousand dollars.
Lottery, sir?
Yeah. One of them is proposing to build a house apparently, and the other one may not be. And so, I mean, that would be maybe a distinguishing factor. But that, as I said, it was kind of a, as I understand it, they basically were just both given if one of it even bid twenty-five thousand and two dollars, but they both bid twenty-five thousand even. So.
Well, I say, in making sure that we stay true to a process, that we accept this, that we accept this matter as an emergency item to be added to the agenda for the proper discussion.
Thank you. I have a motion second on favor. In the position, okay. Start it to the emergency item.
Thank you. So.
I will also make a motion that we, that we entertain the proposals that we have on the table, allowing staff and the realtor to come up with the determining factor of who will be able to purchase the coming up with it, but allowing the commission the final decision on the purchase.
Probably what I would suggest, if we, I apologize, you got to move on forward.
No, I'm willing to listen.
I was going to suggest that we got two high bidders. I would basically suggest we go back to vote up one more time and say, look, these are your two bids at twenty-five, we'll give you till five o'clock to, for somebody to say what their absolute maximum is, and hopefully they'll don't bid the same amount.
What I'm trying to repeat what it is that you're saying, I will accept what it is that you're saying. Which will allow us to go back to bidders to give them a one last opportunity to five o'clock deadline.
I second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
All right.
Any options? Okay, great.
This is, this is what I
This is the vacant lot.
For the bid.
So what I'm saying is, if we bid, if we, if we move forward this part, if the lots fail, that number five is right here, correct? This one, so we don't have to.
But it, it would not, I mean, I want to just make you aware of that. As for context, I did not want you not to be aware of that when you made a decision on the lots. That's the reason I gave you that.
And I think my problem with this is, if we have someone speaking on the association that is not really an association, I feel that they can come back and backfire on us as a commission.
Well, yeah, I understand, but what I was just saying, I didn't forget the there, I guess, these, these people want to come to the table and talk to us about this. I just don't want, just go ahead and do this piece without, but I just, I would say no, I would say no. And we will, or have, you know, I just say no until I can get back.
But we're all on both?
Yeah.
Yeah. This does not presume that from coming back with more documentation, information, we don't call them, it's interesting surrounding property, but, you know, it doesn't presume that necessarily happening in the near future. I'd love to see again documentation about who, part of the membership, the votes that were taken to establish proposal. I just don't see a lot of supporting documentation.
Right, I understand, but this happened, came in like a perfect storm, all of this stuff came back at one time when we got these through email, and we got those bids or whatever that came back and with the roads coming back with high bidders. So it is kind of like a perfect storm, I just have to say no to this, not super, super, that's it.
Thank you.
I would make this my last comment with regards to this, because we haven't voted on. But I would say that the idea of the South Historic District purchasing the hemicall has not been a new conversation. It's just been a conversation that has come back up. It was brought to us one time before by Mr. Russo on several occasions. So this is not the first opportunity that they've had to plan actually purchase the facility.
This is not Mr. Russo only, now, this is.
He's voted by our association.
Yeah, we have, this is normal people in the association. I'm not there, who's all involved, I just, I didn't get an opportunity to that.
Thank you. With that said, I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Ms. Kitchens.
Elite Kitchen's handling, except for south folks, people Latinx or, and I have a request of you that I think you can do by consensus, but if need be, I'd like you to put it on the agenda the next time. I am on your, one of your city committees and one of your city boards. And as such, and as a citizen of Latinx, I'm requesting that the city schedule planning session for all board members, committee members and commission members on Sunshine Law, the latest version of Robert's Rules of Order, because that's what the city operates under by code. And I understand that there's some updated Robert's Rules of Order, as well as Florida Ethics Law. And we've got several new board members and several new committee members. And there's a current discussion about maybe combining two boards. So I think it'd be very advantageous for the city. And I know it would for me as a board member, and as a citizen, I'd like to see the commission and all the board members and committee members be really up to date on all the rules that the government is wanting to operations. I would also, if it's possible, when you have this training session, that you also put it into the forum, so that the citizens are a little bit aware of the rules of operation that the government operates under. And if you need to put it on the agenda, or want me to come, it's coming in the agenda now, I'll do that. I don't see this as a work, it's out of any way, shape or form, I think you can do it by consensus. Like three D shares, commitments, we have planning sessions on Florida Ethics, Sunshine Law, and I know you all have some planning with Sunshine Law where revenue never hurts, and especially Robert's Rules of Order. So if you want me to come back, is it, I put it on the agenda, I'll be glad to. Or if you want to put it on the agenda yourself, if it has to be done that way, or you can vote, you can do it by consensus, just let me know what you want me to do and be polite.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchens. And I think it's a worthwhile thought for a future workshop in the near future. I think we could all use training on those areas, whether we've had it or not, it doesn't hurt to have a refresher. So I think a workshop could be warranted. Ms. Thomas, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, Madam Mayor, we do conduct such workshops with the boards, historical preservation board, the planning board. We have conducted such items and given them a handbook in order for them to know what the items are. And the commissioners receive a four hours of mandatory ethics credit.
Every year.
Training from Florida League of Cities every year.
Well, that's good. I think they need, we need, not only the additional plan or order to grow the water, they've been updated, the last time I checked. Robert's Rules of Order, they've been updated, the last time I checked them, they were updated the previous time I checked them, and somebody told me they've been updated even more, so I think it's very advantageous. We also have the zoning board of appeals, all the committees are also under the Sunshine Law, the tree committee, the citizens advisory task force, CDBG, which I'm an older member of. So, we do, we do need some more, we need, at least for the Roberts Rules of Order. So, I think that would be, if you all would do a workshop, and if you want me to get on the agenda the next time, I'll be glad to, just let me know what you want me to do, other than just sit down. Which I want to do.
Thank you.
So, you want me to get on the agenda, or can you discuss, can you do something about this without it being an agenda item, since it's a workshop? Thank you, Ms. Thomas, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss.
Hi, I'm Dr. Gary Bliss, I live 134 Cedar Creek in Laka. And I want to ask if it's appropriate, so I'm gonna ask if it's appropriate to ask the commission if they want to ask any questions to any of the bidders, of one of the bidders on the property. Is it appropriate for the commission to ask me any questions about what my intentions are with the property? Or is it appropriate for me to adjust my bid upwards to try to obtain the property? If not, if it's not appropriate, I'll sit down.
Well, I'm listening to you. Direct action, it's definitely Ms. Thomas.
My understanding is that the commission approved our, going back to the two high bidders, of which you are one.
That's right.
And giving both of you an opportunity to submit an additional bid within the same timeframe, without either of you knowing what the other bid is. You both already know that you both have $25,000 bids. So, we would give both of you an opportunity to submit an additional bid, like we did last time, you know, within a reasonable period of time. And then whoever is high in that bid process would, would take the project.
Okay, so the commission not entertaining the contract? We can't take the discussion.
I think so, not at this time.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Anybody else, or here for public comments? Seeing that, we'll close public moment. And we will launch the consent agenda. You have a motion to approve this kind of agenda?
If there are any, if there anything that needs to be pulled.
If there are any people who can present that?
Then, Mayor, I'd like to vote. Item six, B and C three, we're.
Okay, and eleven, the first, finally, three, four.
I'm in promotion, that'd be set, I, the consent agenda excluding items six B and six C for discussion.
Second. Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Item B. I want to just speak to that.
Yeah, here, I think that's the moment, I'm getting out of a presentation from taking minutes. A resolution of the City of Palaca setting forth procedures for the hometown hero and unsung hero awards and providing for scrimmage errors, resolution 2023 R 56.
Oh, second.
Question?
Yeah, well, those are two different awards, as I recall. And one that was initiated Black History Month this year was the Unsummed Hero Award. And that's when we posed and probably agreed on, every commissioner would pick one person that they want to have recognized, as we did, as unsung hero in our community. I'm okay with the parameters for the hometown hero, because that already existed. But for the unsung hero, I would like to table that, pull it out on the table, so we have a discussion.
Is that already in the hometown? Already existed?
The hometown already exists, I think.
Like I said, not.
Unsummed was the one that we presented.
Right, well, I don't know if it was to this.
It was, it was.
To this, okay.
That's what she just told.
Well, if, if, it existed, but it didn't have criteria.
The hometown?
Well, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, and that's what I said, I'm okay with that one.
Okay.
But the direction on the unsung hero, we talked about, and we actually, we were gonna, we were gonna elect one particular person, but then we said, no, it'd be better to get all the commissioners, recognize one individual, Black History Month, it coincided with Black History Month. And that was the last conversation I was having. Go ahead.
Commissioner, if we may, can we just table the entire portion of it versus one, just one item? If we can just table the entire item B and have that discussion later.
Absolutely.
That is commercial on board recognition, that's what's at stake, is a motion, a second, I would like.
A motion to table, that's present, there were any other.
May I vote for table?
I mean, I would love to have it done, represent it later, so, take your procedures, take your procedure, but Black History Month is over.
What about that, next month?
You need to meet your name.
Next month, we, we don't need that anymore.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have a motion to table, and we schedule for next week, agenda next week?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
From, could you, Ms. France, read, say?
Thank you. Thank you very much, resolution number 2023 R 57, a resolution authorizing a budget transfer for fiscal year 2022-23, within the utility fund from executive salaries and travel to the general fund, executive salaries and travel, and providing for scrimmage errors.
Let's see.
But, I would, I'm ready to see.
So.
So.
Second.
Okay, forty to the second, Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the housekeeping item, from commissioners, from Mayor. What this is, the estimated cost of the general fund and reallocation of revenues and expenses from utility fund to the general fund related to my occasion title. And covering the estimated payout associated with Mr. Holmes' retirement, the estimated payout is currently tied.
The amount of $110,579. I wish. I wish.
I mean, that's.
That's not the payout.
His salaries and travel.
The photo might you see there is not associated with the payout, it is the allocation of costs associated with my position, Mr. Holmes' position, and his payout. So, these were all expenses that were going to occur no matter what, we're just reallocating them to the proper fund. So, it is a net zero impact.
My question is, is anyone to be presented? I mean, you know, I have right now, a little breakdown, just to see what's going where. I would like them.
That's your call.
So, within the resolutions, sir, under item number three, you can see a breakdown, and you can see under the column, recommended amounts, the negative balances are the ones shown in red or in parentheses, and the positive amounts, which equal the negative amounts. So, you can see that there is a net zero impact going each line item.
I asked a question that I, city manager, not, not right now, Mr. Griffin. I'm okay with it.
I mean, basically, you just, you're going from the utility fund over to the general fund.
Yes.
Correct. I mean, that's what I was going.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. Regent of this, here's a discussion direction on the disposition of surplus property with the homes.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Griffin. We, we have some real properties that we would like your direction about, potentially disposing of. As you may have heard, Mr. Griffin, earlier, from earlier disposition of surplus properties, we accumulated a balance of about $44,000, probably was.
Forty-seven remaining, we actually accumulated more than that.
So, we still have $47,000 remaining, and we're proposing to use that money, as you heard, partly in the life removal process. We still have some surplus properties, of course, this is a two-edged sword that cuts in favor of the city, at least from staff perspective, in that you put property back on the tax roll in the hands of private individuals, and the proceeds of the sales are used by us to try to hopefully improve other properties, which we may end up acquiring and selling and putting back on the tax rolls and using to continue the process down the road. So, the properties that Mr. Griffin has to present to you, obviously, it's, they would have declared surplus, and then we would offer them for sale. And we were proposing offering for sale, again, through a broker, but it's given.
Yes, we've got the pictures here for you, you need a general description of where these are. The first one is the vacant parcel behind Lucky Way at Hudson and Edmore Street, next to College Arms. This grant, can we go to that one? Actually, the next two parcels that you see here are adjacent to one another. These are at the intersection of Kirby and Morris, adjacent to the south of Sapporo District, next to the ravine. This is probably the only buildable portion of the city-owned land on that block. There's the second piece. Next slide. There is two here, this is the dead end of Olive Street at North Eleven. We did have a prospective buyer that reached out about this about a month ago, they've just picked up one of the homes on this road, and they're fixing it up. So, there's that one, and then this grant, the next slide should show the one on the corner of Eleven and Olive, yes, thank you. Next slide. Across the street, to the south, another buildable lot, at Eleven and Olive. And another one. I think we may have one more, yes. So, North Twelfth Street, at the end of Ocean Street, on the other side of the railroad tracks. At first, we did not think that this was an accessible lot, but there is platted right away to this property. So, it is a buildable lot. Right now, it's just wooded. All of these were previously identified for surplus about two years ago by staff. We're building, bringing them back to you. Our recommendation is to follow a similar process on Heming Hall. If you declare them surplus and authorize us, we will reach out to the realtor, get a broker's opinion, and we'll report back to you on the high and low, and get your authorization to list those on M O S.
We would not be listing them yet, we would just be going out for the broker opinion with a high, low, and then bringing them back to you at that point, for you to say yes or no on the way to list them.
You have my support.
Yeah, we, we should. There's no sense in, you said it just.
Hanging on to this thing.
And I'm all for it, well, but in the process, is there any way, it's a legal question, any way that we could have, in the language we sell these property, the surplus, that within a certain frank timeframe, they're gonna have to make some improvements to the area versus being an asset landlord and just went and grow up and stay grown like it is. I don't know what it's actually called, the language. The language is escaping me, what they would have to do, some type of action within a two to four-year period on that property, once they purchase it. It can't just lay dormant and vacant like that.
Ms. Thomas?
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir. And yes.
Yeah, so, when we do it, I would love that language to be included, so that people, go ahead, sit down.
Normally, what that includes would be, for instance, a reverter clause.
Okay.
Implement, but it would be essentially one that stated that if they did not do, if it is construct, you know, single family structure or whatever on the property, within a long period of time, the city could take us out of the reverter clause and pay them back the purchase price, and basically reverse the property. When you couldn't take it back, but you could pay them back the purchase price and re, you know, reverse the property.
That's only, that's only penalty they would.
Fair.
That's not really a penalty.
And coming up, you know, maybe if there's anything relating to the property being derelict, or we, or anything that the city has to put them, probably back in the state of war, previous decisions, if it was cleared land, and they overgrown, then the city would need to go in and build them all in, including the property. We decided to recover those costs.
Well, that would what make it fall back into code enforcement.
Yeah.
Then it's come derelict, and code enforcement will do that, and then we go through the abatement process, and then we should, whatever funds that we'd spend it, in order to bring the property into.
You could have put a reverter clause that said that if they didn't build, that it comes back to the city free of charge, but I doubt, very, very seriously, anybody would buy, with the understanding that they could lose the property if they didn't build it within two years or whatever the timeframe would be, you could do it.
Okay, I will ask a form now, please.
I believe, in parts of the board, that the request was to give staff the ability to go out and get the matter that we're talking about now, with regard to the reverter clause, will be, as their staff has brought us that, the information that they are requested here. So, that would be appropriate, to have those additional conversations.
One last question.
Okay.
I know we just attended a conference, and that came up, and other municipalities were doing that, when they were, surplus of property, they were to have some teeth in the contracts, a reverter clause, pause of that, and so, that made those properties be more valuable. The adjacent property owners were also happy due to the fact that they saw progress, mostly just another owner of the property.
Mayor, I would like to offer a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to offer a motion that we give staff the ability to go out, Jonathan, if you would come back and help me, as you stated, giving the authorities to go out, give the realtor, give us the.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ah, you're doing great, Commissioner.
Yeah, secure a broker's opinion, probably above the cost, bringing back you of your consideration and final authorization of the surplus.
Really what he said.
All in favor? Thank you. On to number eight, a doc resolution pointing from reality, Ms. France.
Being, yeah. There are actually two different versions of this resolution, and if I may, I'll read one and then read the other. The first one is labeled eight, to know the difference between them. It's a resolution of the City of Palaca Board authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two A with Florida Trucking and Paving during business as Jane &amp; Milling Incorporated for hot mixed asphalt paving services, for a deduction of $58,774.26 for a total project cost of $121,182.62, and providing for scrimmage errors. Option B is a resolution of the City of Palaca Board authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two B with Florida Trucking and Paving during business as Jane &amp; Milling Incorporated for hot mixed asphalt paving services, for an addition of $9,697.80 for a total project cost of $195,433.58, and providing for scrimmage errors.
So, no, we have to.
A or B?
What's it?
A.
What's that?
A.
Okay, one, okay, well. We should have voted on it.
Mayor, could, could someone perhaps move that you enter into discussion on the option before a motion to pass either regular or secret?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we move for discussion prior to making a overall recommendation.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Mayor? Mission, we have two options, one was brought to us after reaching out to the resident on Dunlop Street between this and six. We canvassed the neighborhood, they had two of them that actually live on Dunlop Street, they expressed some concern as to the necessity of paving the road, being that they would be the only ones affected by it. They had a letter provided by them and signed, basically, believing to, you know, they're the only people that would be affected by this, which because of. They're the only people that would be affected by this, uh, which the cost of paving would be approximately seventy five thousand dollars. Um, pictured here are the two properties on the north side of Dunham. Now, those are the two residences that would be affected by this. Um, a little further down on the south west side, I believe, um, in green, uh, was one resident who was in favor of paving of Dunham and Fifth and Sixth. Believe she was the one who had made the complaint about the water pouring at the end of Fifth Street that is now addressed by the structure there. Um, so change order two A would be deducting and removing the paving of that in consideration of the two residents on that street, you know, outlining that they don't see the necessity of effect any change for just them. Uh, two B would be moving forward with the paving of that in consideration for the new concrete at both prices proposed by the contractor after modifying the totals from removing Madison Street. In both change orders, we do have some necessary modifications to seventeenth and eighteenth street to address some of the structures that we raised and pictured earlier, and some, that one manhole that needs to be raised up, uh, or.
Color, yeah, so maybe help simplify. You remember, all of this came to light because of a complaint concerned by the property owner that would be in the green uh, on our, the green parcel, uh, about water traveling down Fifth Street, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Earlier in Mr. McMillan's presentation, he showed you what he thought to be a structured cure for the water issue that that particular resident was experiencing. Somewhere in the mix uh, the proposal arose to pave Dunham Street, which as all of you probably know, is not paved, which is, is the stretch of street between the parcels that are in to the upper side of the page, to the parcels to the southern, the, the lower side of the page. And, and I guess would simplify, the folks in the red or pink, they don't want to pay, is that right?
They don't see the necessity in it, both of them, they're, they're the only two people there.
They don't want to pay. The only one who does want to pay is the one on the green that's up to the south, who was first complaining about water, which we think we've addressed.
Correct.
So paving is going to take some yard of some of the folks that are there. Um, that's one of the considerations of not paving it is, is that correct?
Correct, the, um, the right of way that extends significantly into what they have approached upon, um, and it would require removing some landscaping, removing or moving some of the personal belongings of the residences, um, also a community mailbox may be affected by paving operations, their access during construction to these two people's homes would be disrupted multiple times as well.
So staff is fine either way the commissioners to go, they wanted the commission, we wanted the commission to know that they are competing interests, concerns, or preferences, and would take staff, would take the commission's direction.
I, I mean, um, if we would have taken a survey or a vote in that area, it would easily be outvoted by those that do not, so I would be in favor of going with the recommendation, um, of the majority.
I'm, I'm, I'm just in favor of removing any of the such standard roads that we have in the city that, uh, we, we did not have a lot of these dirt roads inside the city where people are paying taxes, so at some point, we have emergency, uh, vehicles, among other things, have traveled some of these, um, these roads, so at what point are we going to move away from main, uh, having all of these dirt roads that you have to keep revisiting to have it either the county or the city, I don't think the city will go out and do any raiding, so it take multiple times to keep going out raiding these roads. So that's wear and tear on the equipment, multiple visits among other things, so we just need to look at not only just the one time calls, but I, I just think, whatever we need to do and improve it, I don't think it's going to be, I mean, from a standpoint, is this going to free mobility, vehicle mobility?
I understand, and I would hardly agree, but you said the taxpayers who are paying, the taxpayers who live on that road don't want it, so who are not listed to the majority, or?
I'm just, I'm just saying, what we need to do throughout our city, um, the commission can do what it wants, I just, that was my personal.
Commissioner.
Um, I know that area well, uh, Commissioner Born, I think I went out, uh, there. And, uh, another young lady that live on that corner, she has a mobility issue, she had complained and complained about it. To deal with the, uh, the right of way, we're going to lose, they're going to lose property, that's not their property. That was road, and what they have done is now taking over that road, there, if, if, if we actually have code enforcement go down there, I guarantee that stuff will be moved. It is on the roadway, it's blocking the roadway, so there also was a drainage that was on that corner, it was prepared before you got here, uh, that had been neglected along with a sidewalk that was, uh, a hazard. So that road had, that area had been neglected for a long time, and that's two residents, I know those two wooden houses right on that corner, what you're speaking of. But there, there are three more houses right there on the, in that same area, and one being that the LA that's been having a mobility problem and flooding. Uh, we have a million of whatever material you're going to use, I, I think it'd be well spent, especially when Sixth Street was freshly paved from Bronson all the way down to the corner, and then we stopped the work, um, and then they have bricks going down on Fifth Street to the corner and stop. Um, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Born on this one, we need to play and carry out that project. Um, and that'd be my vote to carry it out.
That was option.
That would be option two B.
Yeah, because we did review the research, but this was Sixth Street was done all out uh, eight, eight, nine months ago, maybe. I don't think that was scheduled.
Commissioner Campbell, you ready? Decision. The pleasure of the former.
You're waiting for it, Mr. Born.
Well, I, I make a motion that we go with option two B.
Second. On favor?
Uh.
Hi, and any opposition? Okay, thank you. Thank you. On to Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Campbell.
Yes, I have, um, just two comments. Uh, it's been a while since we've had a joint meeting with the county, I believe that it's time that we come back around the table to discuss some of the joint ventures that we have as county and city. Um, it's long overdue, we want to see it happen rather sooner than later, uh, especially with some of the things that we have that are for our succession and things of that nature, I think it would be the opportune time for us to, um, join forces and talk about the things that we as a commission here locally in the city of Palacaford have and with the county. My additional question, and this may be directed more so to Jonathan, um, is the clearing of the what's known as the palm mold in Midtown. Um, it's currently the housing of, uh, some of the lay down yard stuff, the, the pipes. Um, I received a photo, um, from one of the citizens that lives in that area, um, children are playing, it was once a park. Um, children are playing or trying to play, but they're met with resistance with some of the pipes and some of the construction material that's there, um, once I received that information, I have a growing concern that, um, one, you took away a park, and two, that someone may get hurt, not just at you, but anyone could potentially be walking through. So what are we going to take safety measures at the city to either one, put signage up to not encourage individuals to play, um, to make it more safe, to remove it? I would like to know what steps can we take to make sure that we don't run into injury?
So just some general backgrounds, to understand your options, um, it's not something that we currently specify in our standard contract that they have, it's their lay down yard. The city is listed as an additional insured by all of its contractors, uh, but that does not fully mitigate, uh, what Commissioner Campbell is bringing up. So some options, um, for you to consider, and then the implications of those are, uh, the first, uh, required contractor to post no trespassing and signage to notify people that they are to stay off of the property while it's being utilized or construction premises. Uh, the second is the city either requiring a contractor or installing temporary construction, both of which would be an added cost to the project. So, um, as I see it, those are really the only, your two options, the second one probably being the most definitive one in mitigating the majority of the risk. And Commissioner Campbell did forward me the picture, you have kids sitting on PVC pipe hearing to play some sort of pickup ball game.
So, yeah, I, I agree with, I'm going back into this one, but I agree with, uh, Commissioner Campbell, we, uh, we do need to make, uh, meeting with the county, but we need to make sure that we have authorities and different things of that nature, that when we do go there, we know what we're going to be meeting about, we've had numerous, um, meetings with them prior to, and so when we go back to the table and try to continue to push the things that are going to help remove a normal issue that we're having with overlapping services among, uh, with, with the, with the unclays and all other things, so there's a, that's a whole different ballgame. Again, like option, this, the, the second option that you mentioned about the, uh, moving on now to the, um, the safety. I think we should not minimize the safety side of things and without noticing where, if people are not going to listen, if they listen or follow those things, we need to make sure that we do our part and fill up whatever fencing that we could be able to be people, out of those construction that exists. My.
If I as a city, we get temporary fencing that we utilize for projects, we don't have that kind of stuff just for our.
No, sir, we typically just find direct for those services, or if a contract, uh, specifications called for it, uh, they would just have a subcontractor come in and install that fencing, but it's a little bit mentioned, we can, we can do that on the two lay down yards that are currently in use, the one that Commissioner Campbell, uh, mentioned, and the other one that's at the end of Laurel, um, Street. I believe it's Laurel and Tenth Street. Um, and I believe the project budgets would be able to sustain that additional cost.
Okay, so you want a motion?
I would make that motion, and you already commented, so somebody wanted to make something, well, I'll be like, can we put this on you, well, we need to, for TVI. Um. Can we make consensus, or do we need by consensus?
We hear you.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, can I interrupt for one second, just for record purposes, uh, the earlier motion to approve what approved two B, uh, actually, yeah, just for clarification, uh, seek confirmation that what you're, so you passed was resolution twenty twenty three R sixty nine B.
Yes.
Which was the one that would have been paving or putting the, uh, lot mixed down off Dunham Street, correct? So that was the resolution B, you read both, both resolutions were read. Um, and then when the motion was made, it was to approve two B. I'm simply, for record purposes, seeking confirmation that you were referencing twenty two, twenty twenty three R sixty nine B, is that correct? Okay. Apologize, I'm thirty three.
Commissioner Young, any comment? Commissioner Born, any further comment?
Uh, no comments.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just want to make sure when we enter that meeting, and maybe this is something that you were talking about with the county, that we have what we're going to, what to talk about before we get, so we'll be able to compare for Anna before they have that.
Also, um, I verify, I want, um, those as a team meetings to be my hope of the things that are said there and after, um. I'll just keep it at that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to stand, this means it's a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, move.
Thank you all.